All right, call the meeting to order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, all right, we got a lot going on. Jamie is not here. I told him to go celebrate his wife's birthday. Okay, so do I have action on the minutes for April 12th, May 3rd, and May 9th?
Question to approve.
Great. Second, any discussion? No. All right, all in favor? Unanimous? Great, thank you. All right, manifest documents are going around. Tom, do you have any resignations?
I do have two.
Okay.
Sarah Brown, especially a teaching teacher at middle school, and Blair Paulson, science teacher.
I make a motion with regret, to accept with regret. Second, all in favor? Unanimous, okay. Superintendent's report.
It has been a great spring with all kinds of great things going on. I did want to mention that the band concert last night was amazing. The sixth grade band played very well, very, very well. The seventh, eighth grade band was phenomenal. We really have seen dramatic growth. I can't wait to see what it's like when there's seniors in high school. Super fun. The high school band was fantastic. So the spring concert season is with us, and I just wanted to invite members of the public to come to the chorus concert next Tuesday night. The chorus program has grown dramatically this year of the new choral director. He's doing a great job, and I really can't wait to see what happens next Tuesday. Other than that, we are moving forward. We have upcoming interviews from assistant principal, and we are collecting applications, and we'll be scheduling interviews for the principal for the awards. Thank you, everyone who attended the music concerts last night. It was super fun.
Next time, we'll have to make sure Bob Dawson does not schedule a last chance meet the same time as the concert.
And Kona Ice was here last night.
Kona Ice was.
Yeah, Kona Ice was here.
There were some very happy children, I can tell you.
There were.
And some adults, too. Just saying. If no one is opposed to it, I would really like to move our ELA presentation up because we already made them wait because we were running late to start our meeting, so if no one's opposed. All right, do you like to, yeah. Heidi, you're already here so early. I mean, let's get you out of here, home to your family.
I was gonna say.
I know.
Literally the first person in the district every day.
Let's get her home.
Maybe Matt sometimes, but.
Six o'clock.
What was the presentation?
For the ELOs.
Fair enough, Heidi.
I thought I would be sly and sit in the sun before prom, and then I sent you off my back, and I had to call Madden. Please, why is all my bill? I thought that was fake. I didn't think that was really.
Oh, my gosh.
Nope, it really did go on. Who knew?
You doing a slideshow?
I am, yeah.
Do you want me to run the slideshow while you talk?
Sure, that would be great.
He doesn't do that for me, just so you know.
Before I bring the real stars of the show on. Turn the AC on.
I've been in meetings. I just saw your email. Anytime.
I had my coach send it from the dugout.
Yeah, yeah, totally cool. You can take it up. I got some info for you.
Yeah, whenever.
Yeah, I just got it today.
Okay, I think we're good to go. All right, so for those folks who don't know me, I'm Heidi Levitt. I am the director of counseling here at the high school, and I am stepping in for Carrie Alley tonight. She is our extended learning opportunities and career pathways coordinator, and so I am presenting on her behalf. So for those for tonight, our goal is just to give, as I said, for those of you who aren't as familiar with ELOs, just an overview of our program, our career pathways program, give you a little bit of an update on our after-school grant that we accepted a couple of months ago, and then turn it over to the students. We're going to let you know about their experiences. And if you have a chance to take a break later on, I'll encourage you to look at some of our ELOs because these are amazing, and kids are pretty talented, and one of our students actually sold a piece of artwork this week. So like already starting to make a career based on the ELO that she's had here in high school, so pretty impressive. So as I said, ELOs, it's, the acronym stands for Extended Learning Opportunity. It's learning that can happen anytime, anyplace, anypace, and anywhere, any method. And it can include any number of these things, so the independent studies, internships, community service. We have some students who are doing some traveling this summer, and they're going to be earning some ELO credit for travel that they're doing, so really just any type of creative learning. And it's an amazing opportunity for a school the size of ours because we can't offer archaeology, but I have students who are interested in archaeology and want to make that their path. And so we are able to help them connect their learning and get excited about their future through an ELO. So it just, it opens up the world for kids. So high-quality ELOs, people sometimes don't really understand, what do you mean, if students earning credit for archaeology or our students who are earning credit working at a dental office, they're credit-bearing classes because they're based on the competencies. So the students and their community partner and their teacher will decide on what are the learning experiences? What are they going to learn during the course of this ELO? There's always a partner, so that partner might be a business owner in town. Some of you, I think, have had ELO students, so it might be a community, it might be a business owner. It might be someone in the community who's working at a university who has some expertise in that area. There's a communication plan. Everybody has to fill out the documentation to make sure everybody knows what the expectations are. There's an essential question, what is the student going to learn? The rigorous learning components, and then an assessment plan. How are we going to know that the student mastered the competencies? How are we going to know that they learned what they set out to learn? As I referenced, there are several partners in this, in the ELO. So there's that community partner who has that expertise. There's the parent or guardian who is a partnership in this and agrees to let the student do their learning in an alternative manner. And at the center of it is that student, so they are really the guide for their learning in this process. Oftentimes, when we think of teachers, we think of that as the sage on the stage, and that's not what an ELO is. An ELO is really, it's the guide on the side. That's who the community partner is. Many people think, wow, how can you have a student in a dental office? Aren't they exposed to things? How are they out on a dig with, you know, lots of heavy equipment? Because it's a credit bearing, because it's through the school, the school owns an additional insurance. Not expensive, so don't worry, folks, with the budget. But it just becomes part of the school, and we take on that, that extra liability for them. We have to get all of our businesses that our students are working with approved through the Department of Labor. Most of our students who are doing career work-based learning are being paid for their work. So it becomes a different process, and the business owns a, owns some of that responsibility and the liability for the student as well, through their workman's comp. Parents sign permission slips, and as I said, there's detailed learning plans. The pictures that you're seeing are real students doing real internships. They're not stock pictures from the internet. These are really our kids. So this year, our career pathways program, these are just some of the experiences that our kids have been able to engage in. The financial fair was great in October. The seniors all were by a, like a roulette, a roulette wheel. They were assigned a job and a salary for the year, and then they had to visit different stations and kind of make their salary work for the month. So, oh, you had, you know, you blew out your tire. So now you've got to tap into your, you know, real-life stuff. Your health insurance, you got sick, and your health insurance doesn't cover your co-pays, or your co-pay is really high. And so they had to kind of see, what did they have at the end? Did they have money left over for all their streaming services? Some of them did not. Some of them might have to go back to the flip phone because they didn't have money for the fancy phones. We did career interest inventories with our kids before they went to the Seacoast School of Technology on a field trip. So we held them look at the ONET career information and the Holland career codes, to see what they might be interested in, and then help them develop some pathways to looking at classes that they might take next year, college majors and colleges that are, that offer that major. We took a group of students to Job Corps, which is free training, job training in the state of New Hampshire for students who have disabilities or who meet the income guidelines. And it, I mean, it's amazing. They can live on campus, and it's, it's a great opportunity for kids who, who qualify for that type of training. Senior Success Day was another opportunity for our kids to really have some hands-on learning. Our seniors, while the juniors were taking SATs, our seniors were learning, how do you live on a budget? How do you do laundry? Some of them have no idea how do you run a washing machine. Shocking. But we spent some time on Senior Success Day, teaching them that. How do you make a breakfast sandwich? It was great. So how do you go shopping on a budget? So all those things, it's like we look at it as our last day to do Adulting 101 with them, and we have some great donations from the community. And for every activity that the students participate in, they earn raffle tickets, and then it's a big deal at the end. Those raffle prizes are pretty amazing. We've had lots of career speakers. We've had tattoo artists. We've had pilots. We've had people both in-person and virtual. Anything that our kids are interested in, if they want to hear about it, we're going to try and find somebody who can speak to them. And we've also purchased a program that we can have those virtual career speakers that the kids can engage with and ask questions, and the speaker will email the students back and respond to those questions. We have our Community Partners Breakfast coming up. That is on the 31st, where we will celebrate these partnerships. You are all invited. It's here at the high school. I believe it's at eight or 8:30. You'll get an invitation in the mail. We had about 85 students participating in these extended learning opportunities. So these are the ones with the community partner. They're out there doing the work. So nursing, cosmetology, you can read them, blacksmithing, marine biology, government, fire science. Again, if the kids identify a path that they want to participate in, we've really had to find experiences for them. By the time our kids graduate, they've had at least 14 career-connected experiences, which is just amazing. When I talk with other schools, they, their kids don't have those opportunities. Our students all participated in a hope survey today. We really value this program and these experiences. This is what gets kids excited about in school. When you hear from our students, the passion for their learning, although they're a little nervous, is going to come through. These, I've heard both of these young ladies talk about their internship, and they could talk for days about their internship. That's how excited they are. And a lot of kids in the state of New Hampshire don't have that opportunity. So we are pretty fortunate through your support, through our teachers and our community, to be able to bring these experiences to our kids. And more importantly, our kids are leaving high school with industry-recognized credentials. So licensed nursing assistant, OSHA, those of you working in the trades know that that's something that's valuable for your employees. Service safe, pipe fitting, scuba, these are certifications that are going to get our students jobs. And if they're not going to necessarily get them the job, they're going to give them a step above other applicant who maybe doesn't have those. And again, through grants that we've received and through the budget that we have for this program, we've been able to pay for these certifications for our kids. So cost is not prohibitive for some of our kids to be, leave high school with certifications that are going to get them jobs. As far as our ELOs at the middle school, so this is our, this is our next goal, and I know we accepted that grant, that, the after-school grant. We are working on, we had hoped to be able to start that this year, but then as we thought about it more, we want to do it well because you know, middle school kids, they are tough consumers, right? So if it's not good right from the beginning, it's going to be dead in the water. So we wanted to make sure that what we were doing was really going to capture their attention and get them excited so that they were talking up, and more and more kids were doing it. So our goal is to be able to do more of these internships and experiences at the middle school level, and hopefully this works. This is where we're at so far, and these are the areas that we're hoping to target. So doing something with manufacturing, and these are the credentials that, that will, the students will be able to leave high school with. So we'll start in the middle school with an after-school grant, doing some activities that will lead to CAD electives and woodshop. And then when they are leaving high school, we'll have them certified through Autodesk and remote worker certifications. Again, these are jobs that, certifications in industries that people are looking for, employers are looking for. And you can see those other areas are areas that we are hoping to be able to provide some middle school camps. So working through health and automotive and aviation. So our next steps with regards to this after-school grant are really developing the curriculum for those middle school camps and matching our high school classes to those industry certifications. So really kind of backwards planning. If, if AutoCAD is a certification that our engineering students need, what are we missing in our CAD classes now that's going, that the students would need to know in order to pass an AutoCAD certification? Providing the professional development to our staff so that they can teach these skills and identifying what do we have for supplies already, and what do we need to purchase through that grant? So, and again, we have that $50,000 that we'll be spending to get those things happening so that come the fall, we'll be able to have some after-school things for our middle school folks and have them all ready to go. So, any questions from you guys for me before I bring up our students?
So the delineation between middle school and high school, the high school ELOs are during the school day, and the middle school ELOs would be after school?
Yeah, eventually, I would love to be able to have our middle school ELOs during the day. But again, I think we have to start small and really kind of see what do we need to do to tweak what we do at the high school to make it more accessible for our middle school. The other, the other obstacle that we would face would be transportation. So many of our high school ELOs, they can drive themselves, so they can go to a pipe fitting program. Our middle school kids will have to really think about how we can do that in the school. But some of our high school kids, they also don't have transportation, and so we make that work with those virtual folks. They might be zooming with their mentor who's down in Washington, DC. So if we can make it work, we just have to really think about how to make it accessible for middle school kids.
Sure, and that's understanding, outstanding. Thank you for your work.
You're welcome.
It's really cool.
That chart was put together by Devon Helmke. He's one of our science teachers who's working with us on this program.
I love, I love the idea of the reverse engineering of getting, you know, the actual competencies built into the classes themselves. That's, that's super cool. One question I had is about how the credit-bearing piece works. So are the, are they mapped back towards specific competencies that are part of our, you know, high school, you know, whatever, however many competencies we have, or are they satisfying more general criteria for credit? How does that work?
So we, sometimes we have to be creative. So if it's biology or microbiology, we've had that class before, so we can pull those competencies. Oftentimes, like, we've never offered an archaeology class. So what we'll do is we'll look at like an archaeology class at a college, and they'll often put their competencies on their syllabus. Or, and as Tom has taught us, steal like an artist. So we will, we will.
Yeah, great.
Competencies from other places, and, and then the kids tweak them to their learning. And then it's evaluated at the end, so when the students do their ELO presentations, which will also be happening on March 31st. You, I'm sorry, I think I said the breakfast was on the 31st. The presentation's on the 31st, the breakfast is on the 26th, I think. But you'll get an invitation. But on the presentations, that's, the students have to present their learning and demonstrate what they, they always have to do a project. They have to do a presentation. They have to do research, and they have to do research. And they're evaluated by our teachers on that, and they're scored on a rubric.
Oh, great, okay.
Yep, so it's, there is, it's very similar to a class, and it's very, very different.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome. And we've had students who haven't passed their ELOs, and then they're given an opportunity to reassess. Because just like in the real world, if you fail your driving test, you can always try it again, right? How many lawyers fail the bar?
Right.
And they go back and try it again, and that's the opportunity, that's the lesson that we really want to teach them.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions?
No, great job.
Thanks, Al. I'm going to invite up Abby Alley, and she is going to tell you a little bit about what she has this semester doing.
Hello, I'm Hannah, actually. That's okay. It's okay. Yeah, that's okay. It happens all the time. I'm a junior, and this is my second time doing an ELO this year. I did one last year on the same ELO. I chose to do a behavioral analysis for my ELO, and I hope to make this a career path. I mean, I hope to study this when I get into college. But this year, I decided to do an internship at the elementary school, at DJ Bakey. And, and there I work with the kindergarten classrooms. I help them with math, recess, dismissal, and I help the art teacher. I'm there three times a week, and I really enjoy it overall. I really like it. I think it's a lot of fun, and I get to just practice the skills that I want, that I think go into the career that I'm going into. I really just enjoyed this internship overall because I, I get to just watch the kids and their learning, and I get to help them, especially with math. When I go in there, I get to watch them be challenged, and then I can help them if they are challenged with that, and I feel that really goes into my ELO. But overall, I enjoyed the internship a lot because I feel like I learned a lot of leadership skills because once I do help them, I feel like I'm just like in charge of them so much as I am really guiding them. Like, I'm not giving them the answers so much, I'm just like helping them figure it out themselves. And I really like watching that growth and change into it. Yeah, I hope to do it again next year. I really want to do this again next year. And once I graduate, I hope to study this and do this job until I retire, basically. Yeah, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hannah, just a quick question. Do you want to be a BCBA? Is that what I heard you say?
Yeah.
Okay.
Maybe we should talk to Hannah about visiting some of our time with Dr. Ross Green at the end of the school.
We could definitely do that.
Invite her as a student guest to hear some of his presentations.
Sure, absolutely. Yeah, okay. And next, I'll invite up Mackenzie Coleman. Mackenzie's had a different learning experience and doesn't actually spend any time at Sandberg during the school process, which is going to touch on.
Hi, my name is Mackenzie Coleman, and I'm a senior. So I'm currently a dental assistant at Greatview Dental in Exeter. I started working there last year, and then this year I turned it into my internship. I absolutely love it. I go there four times a week, and it has been an amazing opportunity because I've known ever since I was little that I wanted to be a dentist. So this year, we had to create goals for our internship class, and some of my goals were to better expand on my written and oral communication in the dental field, better prepare myself for college and what I wanted to do in life, and really understand the structure and organization of the practice. And I feel that I've really done this because now it's getting to the point where I've been there for over a year. I'm really comfortable with all my patients, and it's a lot easier for me to sit them down, have a conversation with them, and make them feel less anxious about being in the office. And as well as writing my notes up, I have to write all of the doctor's notes, and I really struggled with that in the beginning because I was still learning when I started assisting, and learning the vocabulary and the terminology was very challenging for me. But I feel that now I'm at the point where I really know everything. I can talk to you about all of the terminology. I can have a conversation with my mentor, and I can understand all of like the terms and vocabulary he's using. And I just feel like that's really shown myself that like I'm learning and still growing. As for learning about the office in general, our bookkeeper unfortunately passed away a few months ago, and that really gave me a better insight at what was happening because our assistant at the office took on that role. So having her take on that role gave me an opportunity to grow because they put more responsibility on me as an assistant, and it really gave me more of an insight on what was happening in the office. I learned a lot of things about the background of the office that I had no idea about that wasn't common knowledge because I am so young. They kind of look at me as I am young. So that just really gave me a lot more opportunity to show them that I'm responsible and that I do know what I'm doing, and I'm still learning. And for my third goal, this has really helped me and prepared me for college because although I'm not doing all the drilling, I'm assisting, and I can explain to you any procedure that we do in depth. Not as in-depth as the dentist, but I've had a great mentor who's been really able to fully understand and explain what he's doing, which is really challenging because when he's working, it's, you're working in very tight, close quarters, and it's really, really hard to be able to explain what you're doing as he's working, but he always lets me know that I'm able to ask questions. And if I'm ever confused about anything, he takes the time to really explain what he's doing. So in the future, I will be going to UNE. I will be majoring in biology and then going on to the dental school there. And then I will be doing a pediatric residency. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Good job.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
So I just wanted to clarify the dates. The day for the Community Partners Breakfast is May 25th, and that is from 8 to 10. And then we have the internship presentations, which will be on May 31st, and those happen after school. And if you are interested in attending the internship presentations and being part of the assessment and looking at the rubrics and hearing what the kids are talking about, then just send me an email, and I will get you assigned to a group. You'll get a rubric, and you'll get to fill it out and ask lots of questions. And we'll probably, we'll have a good number of our students that will be presenting that time, so we'll sign you up. And if there's a career field you're interested in, we can let you know what the options are, and you can choose which one you're going to. All right. Thanks for having us come tonight, and thanks for supporting this program.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great job.
All right. My voice is just going all of a sudden. It is. It's all that talking I did. All right, so we'll move on to the not-so-fun stuff, all the committee reports. Does anyone have a committee report?
Official report, yeah.
Okay, all right. Where you going? JJ, student council, student council report.
Sorry.
Right, it's just, it's literally just. I know. It's ridiculous.
So this past Friday, we had our prom, which was per normal, run by the juniors, and it was great. It was at Atkinson Country Club, and I had a great time. The food there, very good stuffed shells, very good stuffed shells. And everyone had a great time. It was, that's the second prom back since COVID, and it was really, it was a great time. Everyone there was dancing the entire time. It was, it was really a great experience, and I'm very glad that I got to go. And I know a few people that had COVID that, last time around, that couldn't go and got to go this time, and they are, three that I know off the top of my head, and they all had a great time and were so happy to be there. So that went absolutely great, and congratulations and great job to the. the twenty twenty-three prom committee and the twenty twenty-four class council and planning. It was they did a great job. Congratulations to the AP Calc kids who took their exam. That's one of the that's one of the hardest classes that we offer, if not the hardest class, and it's incredibly difficult exam. So congratulations for them for taking it. That's Erica Smith, Heather Gibbs, Lucas Yosef, Kyle, sorry, Kyle Brown and Kevin Lawwit. Congratulations to them. That outstanding feat. I did it myself last year and it's incredibly difficult. So congratulations to them. The Sustainability Club is doing a wood drop-off where they're collecting woods, wood and they'll be using it for different projects around the school like gardening beds and just a bunch of different little mini projects they've got going on that they're working on. If you'd like to drop off wood, you can email miss Petrucci at m.petruci@saush seventeen dot net. And the New Hampshire State Liquor Enforcement Group came in and had us with drunk goggles drive around with a golf cart. There was a parent permission form involved. And so we all we got to do that. It was really actually I I did it myself. It was a it was fun. It was fun to try. They had they had a cone obstacle course set up around the parking lot and that was it was interesting. It was interesting to watch. Some some people were more efficient than others, but you know. That's the nicest way I could put it.
Hope it hit the target of what the purpose was.
Yeah, it definitely did. They were very professional about it and it was it was first time you put it on, go to high five someone.
Goggles are if you've never had to do that and the goggles, it's like it's crazy.
Definitely. And I think that's all I have. Yeah, that's all I have for this week.
Yeah.
I just wanted to mention that I was so excited about the band concert. I forgot that Monday night we had the scholarship.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Thank you. Jeremiah was there, represented the board and Jamie was there to give out the board scholarship. Forty-nine thousand dollars.
I know.
Was given out Monday night. It was amazing. My second favorite night of the year. My first favorite night of the year is the academic awards thing, but it's a close. It's really a tie.
I know.
They're both great.
I was bummed not being there, but we had kids in different directions, so.
And I did find find out that that kids know all about I Want to Rock and Roll All Night.
Oh, absolutely.
Which I was happy.
Everyone knows Kiss.
Really old and dated, words of wisdom, which I thought was made me feel old. So JJ assured me that.
Everyone knows Kiss.
Everybody knows. Everybody.
One more thing. The chorus concert is next Tuesday, so go support them.
Yes, that'll be great.
All right. First public comment. Since there is no one there, we will move on. All right. MOU from Memorial School with CBI. How do you say that? Tarex USA. Matt?
That wasn't me.
Oh, it says you.
It does. Okay.
Isn't that for the the change of locations?
Sure.
Sure it is.
I can do it.
I don't know what's going on. Had a voice when I got here.
So.
Put it much closer to my mouth and I'll just whisper.
All right. So I know Memorial School has been working with a local company over there near that location. And what they're trying to do is they're trying to set up a it's not a relocation site, but rather a an evacuation site. So if something, say, for example, there was a a train accident, they can all evacuate to this other location where we would pick them up by school bus and bring them to the reunification location. So this company is gracious to have us relocate our students there in case of an emergency. We have looked at the facility. We can drive school buses on the property and it's big enough to house all the students. Questions?
So we're just looking for a vote to authorize us to enter. The basic purpose is if there's a an issue that causes us to have to evacuate Memorial at short notice, this would be the location that we would go to. Depending on the situation, we may still also use the Austin Seventeen House as a connection area because of the flow of traffic.
I was going to ask, where do they currently go? Is it Austin Seventeen or?
I don't know.
Oh, everyone is right now it's supposed to go to the Austin House.
Okay, the entire district.
What what this does is it just kind of gives us another location that is.
Definitely closer, much closer. Yeah, okay.
Is there any any financial contract, like?
Just kind of memorializing that they won't be liable by them something happens.
I make a motion to approve this memorandum of understanding for CBI, CBI Tarex USA LLC and the Sandberg Memorial School District.
Second.
Second.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor?
I'm going to abstain.
Okay.
Okay. So.
Well, thanks for.
Five in favor and Rick is abstaining.
We got to pass my. Didn't ask me.
I know. They could go to my house too, either one, right? One of our houses. Perfect.
Gonna walk right through.
Right in the yards. Okay, lunch rates for twenty-three, twenty-four.
Okay, so our food service company has asked, they've given us two different letters, okay? And really, I'm I'm asking the school board to pick one or the other. One of the letters says that I think I believe it's a twenty-five cent increase, but it requires an eighteen thousand dollar subsidy from the general fund. The other one is a fifteen fifty cent increase with no subsidy from the general fund. So what I'm recommending is the fifty cent increase in in lunch rates with no subsidy from the general fund.
Can I? Go ahead with questions.
It's more of, you know, raising it to lunch is very expensive for a lot. Like, I know there is the the free lunch program, but there are families that will not qualify for the free lunch and it is still very.
They're struggling. Yeah.
Like, I know for me, I'm spending hundreds of dollars for for lunch, you know, a month. So I just worry about raising it up another fifty cents.
Can can we quantify it for a monthly? Somebody got lunch every day.
What was that?
Ten dollars a month.
For what?
Additional.
About the increase.
Oh, the no. So right now, middle school lunches are three dollars.
And high school.
Breakfast is two dollars.
Three twenty-five.
Yep. I mean, my kid's lunch account right now.
More, I think you had it right.
Yeah.
That was with the additional. That's additional.
It's not easy, but the cost of everything has gone up so much.
Right.
We don't like this either. Neither of us feel like this is a thing that we want to bring to you. But we also don't really feel comfortable asking the taxpayers to pick up a bill eighteen thousand six hundred and forty-three dollars for school lunch.
Is there any money left in that fund that was started?
In the food service fund?
No.
Oh.
Donation.
I believe you donated some money for that fund. I put some money into that fund. I know he's put money into the fund and we're the only three that have done it so far.
So I'm.
I'm assuming it's.
Probably not going to like the next questions.
It's going to be like.
Have we promoted it like we discussed?
Have we?
Yes.
I don't believe we have.
I already knew the answer to that. So that's a problem. Okay. So that's why there's no money in the fund. So I think the community would probably donate to help kids eat that can't afford it.
That's not the question on the table.
What's the question on the table? I'm sorry. Maybe I missed it.
It was the cost for lunch.
Correct.
If you don't raise the cost for lunch, then we'll be in a deficit of eighteen thousand.
Understood.
Dollars. There are many, many students who would qualify for free and reduced lunch that refuse to fill out the forms. And that is a major problem. It's costing us money with our Title I money. And it's also costing us money with the food program. So there's three separate issues. One is people filling out the forms, which we've been after and working on. The second issue is what is the correct rate for the cost of lunch? And the third one is what do we do for families who don't qualify to fill out, don't who choose to fill out the form but don't qualify? So I just want to caution everyone that when we created this fund to help people with food, I I donated myself, Rick, and I agree with you that we need to promote it more. I'm not pushing back on that. What I'm saying is we have to be very careful because what we don't want is to we we need people to fill the forms out. And they're not filling them out and we don't know why. So I met with the guidance department and talked about it as to why they are. And it's 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 three things. One, it's that we had so long where all of the lunch was totally free that people got out of the habit of filling out the forms. The second is that there are people who don't want other, they think other people are going to know if they fill the forms out so they're embarrassed. Right? And then the third thing is we we as an organization need to decide how tough are we going to be when people don't pay for lunch? And that's a question that's hard to answer. So one strategy is to do what we've done and we're very grateful for it. But the question is, the next question is, what do we do with that money and how do people access it? Because I'm struggling with a philosophical issue. If you haven't filled out the free and reduced lunch form, should you receive a donation from the fund that we've set up? I don't know the answer to that because there are people that would qualify for the free and reduced lunch that would then offset their their lunch balances. But that's not the problem with this issue. This issue is is it's costing the cafe services too much money to purchase the items and run the program. And we're asking you as a board, should we increase the cost of lunch and subsidize it with the general fund or not? That wouldn't be affected by the money that folks donate.
So let's remove some obstacles then, right? So explain it to me because I have no idea what's involved with the forms. So we can remove the obstacle of who would know if I filled out a form? What's the process?
Guidance council.
What's the process?
We send the paper forms home and they send them back and they're collected by the guidance office.
Who who brings it in?
The child.
Yeah. The form goes.
Maybe that's the first problem. Maybe maybe the child shouldn't bring it in. Maybe it should come from the parent.
Well, the form goes home.
And form?
The form goes home with every student at the beginning of every year. In almost every single newsletter that the building principals issue includes a link to the form at the bottom. We've even done an outreach through the paper to try to to get people to to fill out the form. We even thought about it, but we haven't done it yet, to have a giveaway like an iPad for just randomly selected by all the forms that are coming in. Okay? Just so you understand, right now we're at seven percent school lunch. A normal school district is over twenty to sixty percent. So the state looks at us as being wealthy.
What does that mean, seven percent?
Seven, seven percent of your student population qualifies for for free and reduced lunch.
No.
Have applied for and qualified.
Yeah, we need to be clear about what that means.
Of our students have applied for and qualified for free and reduced lunch.
Seven percent of the total.
Prior to the pandemic, it was over fifteen percent.
Okay.
So so I'm not I'm not opposed to the fifty cent increase, right? That's not my problem. I I'm I'm used to working problems backwards, right? So like you told me what the what the issues are. So you sort of have to work it backwards. We have money in funds where where kids, if they don't have money or for whatever reason, we're going to make sure they eat. That's what we.
Oh, yeah, they always.
Okay. But we'll know who those kids are, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay. So then we can approach the parents and say, y- your kid is using X amount of funds. You need to fill out the form or those funds will be taken away. Or or they may not be eligible. We may not take away as the wrong word, but you you sort of got to work the program. People aren't willing to come because they're afraid of the form, right? I'm just saying, maybe we don't solve it tonight, but I think we have to work the program, like work the problem back.
I got a I have a question too.
Sure. Let me just respond to Rick's. I agree with you one hundred percent. But I just want to make sure that we're I'm just trying to keep us focused on the question at hand.
No, I get it.
Which is about the cost of lunch because that will change how far that money goes.
Well, that's that's my question. So I want to assume, so we have an eighteen thousand dollar. It's really.
Thirty-six thousand.
Thirty-six thousand dollar shortfall, right? So we have a thirty-six thousand or an eighteen thousand if we supplement eighteen, right? And we're going to only go to quarter, right? Let's assume that everybody who qualified for the free and reduced lunch applied. Let's just stipulate that everyone who can who can get it gets it. How far apart would we be then? Like, you know, would we need that whole eighteen thousand still?
Oh, yeah.
Do you know what I mean? Like, I want to know because if if Rick's, I want to take Rick's concern out of the equation for a second. I think it's an important concern, but what if it was it was completely satisfied? Where would we be then?
It it the the rate increase is about the my understanding, Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that the rate increase is due to the cost of services and food.
Oh, that I believe.
But not because of the shortfall. It it's so there's there's another bucket that we haven't discussed. It's all kind of intermingled, but the but it's a separate issue. The the question that Rick is asking is there might be a student that's a senior that has a three hundred dollar lunch balance.
Sure.
That they have, they've always eaten. I just want to be clear for the public and everyone involved. Everyone eats a meal. They don't get a second meal if they don't have any money in their account. They don't get to choose whatever they want from Alacar, but they do get a quality meal. And I I checked them out myself. It's a great concern for me personally. And and the the I just want to make sure everyone understands that that this what this would affect is that that each of those meals that adds up that aren't getting paid for for people who haven't filled out the fees that we were trying to to help out will go up by fifty cents, but it still has to be paid to Fresh Picks at the cost that it is. The the subsidy, what this would do is change the amount that they would get from the government subsidy program. I think I answered your question.
Yes. Ish. I want to I want to add some more to this. Okay. So basically, the federal government is subsidizing the meal meal rate, okay? So that each person has an equal opportunity, like a full, full-priced person is paying and getting the same benefit as someone who's getting a free meal. Okay? So you're you're having, it's more of a quality thing at that point. But what it does is it takes the strain off of the the donated funds that that Rick was talking about. But it also expands the amount of money that we receive in Title I funds. It also expands the amount of money we receive in inadequacy funds. So I'm assuming just inadequacy funds, we lost about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars because we went from fifteen percent to seven percent.
It also affects our Title I grants because these baseline is not a free and reduced lunch. So it's complicated.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, those seem to be not the the frequency or the amount of people that fill out that paperwork and qualify is what affects those numbers. Yes. But the the rate that we set has nothing to do with any of that.
No.
Right? So these are right. But but if we have funds that can be put towards it's just a question of how far that eighteen thousand goes, right? If the if the right, if the like right now, that eighteen thousand could, for example, let's say we said eighteen thousand can go towards this to subsidize some of the impact. The more students that qualify would mean for a free and reduced lunch, that eighteen thousand would be able to be applied. The longevity of that would be greater, right?
We have a deficit of eighteen.
Right. There's still a deficit of eighteen.
Yep.
But is that am I am I understanding that right or am I not?
I don't think it's that. I think you're you're saying the right thing. So we had we had the number of people who qualify for free and reduced lunch. That's kind of what I was trying to say to Rick when he first asked, like they're they're related, but not necessarily same issue.
Yeah.
If you have if you have a lunch that's three dollars and seven percent of our students get that free, then the government just gives our lunch program the three dollars.
Right.
If it's three fifty, they give them the three fifty. It it doesn't change. It may decrease or lengthen that, but I'm not sure because it depends on.
A lot of unknowns.
A lot of unknowns. Like even the estimate of eighteen thousand is just an estimate. Right? It's an estimate of like based on this year's numbers. This is what it would be next year. I I don't want to raise this to three fifty. I just want to be clear about what I'm saying. I don't want to rate, but I think that you need to because it's what it costs to run the program. And then we need to work the other two avenues that are a part of this process. The first one being filling out those forms because what I don't want is some folks like yourself, Rick, to donate money to the program and then use it for students that we could have given a free lunch to when there are some kids that. to the program and then use it for students that we could have given a free lunch to when there are some kids that truly can't afford it. You know what I'm saying? Like, it's-
Yeah, there's two, we got to get, approach it from both sides. Get people to fill out the form and get people to donate.
And, and I want to be clear, Rick, this one hundred percent correctly, we have not promoted that. We need to do that.
Okay, so to clarify, it doesn't, I'm sorry.
Well, I just, I guess kind of two things. One is, I think we're just shifting the responsibility of saying it's too much on families, but we're, we're now shifting it to somebody on a fixed income who lives in town. And that's not fair either. It's ninety dollars a year and I, I get that can add up, but that's if your kid actually goes to school every day of the year. But maybe raising it fifty cents is going to make some of those people who should have applied, maybe it's gonna, that could be the tipping point for them to say, now I'm going to apply. I agree that's a problem, but that might be the tipping point. But I just philosophically, I don't think that we should subsidize. The townspeople should not be paying for my kids' lunch. I can, I can afford to pay for my kids' lunch. I don't want a retired person on a fixed income to have to pay for my kids' lunch. That's, that's where I stand on. I agree with that point, but I just, I think it needs to be three fifty.
To clarify, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't read this. I thought, the way that I read it is they were going to have a subsidy. Not, like, we weren't paying them. So that would like, so to clarify, I was confused by the, the language. So yes, I agree with, you should not make taxpayers pay for it. So I'm in agreement. I don't like it, but I'm in agreement with raising it.
Right. And for all intents and purposes, even if we got more kids to qualify, we would still have this deficit because the school is only reimbursing us, or the state is only reimbursing us for the amount of the lunch. So it doesn't matter how many people apply. We still have a deficit.
Right. Right, it, it, it's not, it is such a complicated issue.
You got to buy the food.
Right.
Right, one thing that we have to talk about too, um, is what, how are we going to give that money? To whom? What's the criteria? So raising it's one thing, but giving it out is another. So I'll follow you and we'll talk. Right?
There's, there's ways to work that backwards and figure that out.
Yeah, yeah, I just can't figure out, um, I think that one of the criteria has to be that you build up the free and reduced lunch form.
That's step one.
You bend an eye, that'd be the first one. Step one, step one.
That's a very good-
Great, absolutely.
Yeah, I just sent Matt and Phyllis an email to remind me, we will have something in the works for people to donate to that by June first. We just set a deadline.
I would, I would like to be involved in that too.
We love that, thank you.
Any help I can give.
Yep, yeah, I'm trying to figure out if we can do like a GoFundMe or a PayPal.
No, don't, I would do, you could do like a PayPal or Cat or Venmo, but don't do GoFundMe. They take a huge percent.
Oh, thank you.
PayPal, PayPal Giving Fund takes some too, I think, but we can, we can figure it out.
If you have any ideas, just email me and we'll talk.
Um, I may-
I want to get going.
Yeah.
I was going to make a motion.
Yeah, as was I, go ahead.
I'm going to make a motion to approve, um, the increase of fifty cents to all full price student breakfast and lunch and all adult meals.
A second.
Any further discussion?
We had a good one.
All in favor? All right, unanimous. Thank you. All right, Staples Agreement Donation.
Okay, so there's two parts to this. The first part is, is that Staples, um, had for to accept the, um, donation, they want us to sign an agreement. Um, the last agreement, um, a, a prior administrator signed it and it binds the school district to, um, laws in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And I've kicked it back and I've asked them to send me a new agreement that says the laws of New Hampshire. Because we're in New Hampshire. All right, so, um, that agreement will come back. But in the meantime, they gave us a donation of, um, pens and pencils and crayons and, uh, and they're like, they're like kits. There were thirty-seven crayon kits that were brought to the school district and we dispersed them throughout the, um, the two elementary schools, Bakey and Memorial. Okay, so just to accept the, the thirty-seven crayon boxes, they were huge, huge boxes.
Awesome.
Do you need a motion to accept?
Yes, please.
I'll make a motion to accept.
Second.
Great. All right, any further discussion? All in favor? That's what I figured, but I have to ask.
Thank you for the crayons.
Yeah.
I know, I was fine. I was in policy, I said, fine, now I'm here and I'm a mess.
You were starting to lose it before we started.
Yeah.
It's just, it's now.
Yeah, it's my yearly laryngitis for my allergies. I love it. All right.
Murder pollen.
Yeah. Year end contingency fund.
All right, this seems like Matt night.
It is.
Yeah.
Woo-hoo.
Yeah, all right, so, um, the contingency fund is a fund, it's really, it's really what doesn't get returned back to taxpayers. Think of it that way, okay? Um, what, what the taxpayers allowed us to do is to set aside two and a half percent of the net assessment. The net assessment is your budgeted expenditures minus your local revenues, okay? And then you just multiply it by two, two and a half percent and it comes out with six hundred and twelve thousand dollars. Last year it was five hundred and thirty-four thousand. It just happens to be six hundred and twelve thousand. So we try to have the school board approve this annually before the end of the fiscal year because the prior year we call it, we just say that it lapses and we want to reauthorize it every single year. Okay, if the school board doesn't authorize it, it gets returned back to the taxpayers. Okay, the funds can be used, well, historically, the funds could only be used for, um, emergency purposes with the approval of the Budget Committee, the School Board, uh, the Department of Revenue Administration and the Department of, of Education. Now it can be used by the school board after a public hearing.
I, I would just say this, we worked really, really hard to move the budget for next year down from eight point
It wa- it was, it was-
Over eight percent down to four percent. There was every year that I would strongly encourage you to do the full two point five percent this year. Because with inflation and the, the cost for special education are significant. Troy is working really, really hard on his budget. But he's had a number of vendors come back with increases. We've been fighting back increases. I worked with, um, uh, Alma to lower the price for Alma to try to save money. Uh, we are, we are already pinching pennies for next year now. Because we're, we're just nervous about inflation. Fuel, electricity, heating oil. So I, I would strongly recommend that we withhold the full amount, knowing full well that we're very responsible and we have never tapped this fund. And it's very likely that in a year it will roll back, but I can't guarantee that in this regard.
Well, that's it. It's held for a year.
Held for a year.
And that's it. And then it gets returned to the taxpayers if we do not use it. Um, I don't think-
To know, somebody, somebody should say that clearly.
Yes. Clearly, somebody want to say that more clearly? Um.
I think it was used a little bit.
I know.
It's held for a year and returned to the taxpayers if the, if the school board doesn't retain it next year.
When was the last time that we spent fun, money from funds?
We have never spent money from this fund.
And, and every year, at least for the years that I've been on the board, we have retained it every year and we haven't used it every year.
We have retained it every year and we've never had to spend.
And it's been returned at the end of the-
It's been returned.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor?
Thank you.
Policies.
All right, so some of these were not-
Some of these we're scratching.
Yeah, all right, so.
We're moving, we're pushing out.
So, uh, we, so the strike seven six one, we're going to do, uh, seven six two, we're not doing. Oh, no, are we? No.
Yeah, we're doing that one.
We're doing that one. Uh, seven six one three, we're not doing. KI, we're moving forward. JHC? I don't have that.
I think that was okay.
Yeah, we're moving forward. And KFA, we're table.
Right.
We're looking at one, two, four and five?
Yes.
Yep.
Got me.
Let me just check my hands, please.
You were checking something. That can't be good. It's not a good sign.
I have, I have removed JHC from the agenda.
Oh, you removed Ja- you removed that as well?
Yep.
So one, two and four?
Yeah.
Is what we're looking at?
Well, there you go.
One.
Yes.
You're going off, I'm going off this, sorry.
Two.
Okay, um, I just got reprimanded by a tech director. We need to speak into the mics better than you can over here.
Look at that.
That's always the case. Yeah, it's always the case.
Um, yeah, so I think we're doing seven six one, seven six two and seven six four, and the rest we are holding.
We wanted clarification, further clarification.
We wanted further clarification.
Because we just had policy right before this and-
That's why we were late.
Sorry.
Um, so we are striking, well, I think we should start with seven six two and then go back to seven six.
Don't we have, do we have to strike seven six one first? Or do we have to, it doesn't matter? Okay.
Um, so let's talk about GCEB. I took your feedback about administrative hiring process and drafted a, a policy that um, allowed the flexibility for everyone to-
Gordon, hear me again.
Your mic is not on.
Okay. Hello, check one, two. I did give, uh, a lot of thought to the three different policies, CD, GCEB and GCEBR, and it seemed that it was redundant to have three policies about hiring when we only needed one. So what I tried to do was to condense all three policies into a single policy. Just for the public to understand, uh, one of the issues that we faced is uh, sometimes we like to have two board members at each administrative hiring committee, but sometimes that's just not feasible due to schedules. So, uh, in the policy meeting prior to this meeting, we discussed making it, um, uh, that one would be acceptable, one board member would be acceptable at the hiring committee, but that we would prefer to have two if possible. So I think if you look in your, your Google Drive, we updated that at the policy meeting for you this evening. I talked to Mr. Fitzpatrick, who couldn't be here this evening, and he wanted to talk about, uh, the procedure component of it, which is the type of questions that we ask, some things that we've discussed as a team. And the policy committee discussed that and agreed that that's more process and procedure related, not necessarily policy related, but that it needs to be done and considered. So in other words, uh, what we talked about in the process or the procedure of it is at the building level interviews, the questions are, are, are set by the team and fixed. These are the questions you read in this order, but when it goes to the next level at the central office, it's going to be more based on the applicant's resume um, and their experience and some specific questions about those things. And so we set up the process for that as well in the policy. Uh, it's also important to note that, that we provided flexibility for the committees and me as superintendent to be able to forward, um, at least one candidate to the board, but if we felt like we needed the board to interview two or more, we may exercise that option. But it would be at my, my leisure, not, not, we have to send at least two or three people to the board. And frankly, there have been times where committees have said, if it's not this person, we want to reopen it. So the board didn't really have two people to meet with, so it didn't make sense to do that. So what we tried to do is to rewrite it so that it made sense in practice. Um, instead of constantly saying, well, can we waive the policy on this or can we change that? It's just, it seemed to be the experience of the group that this, what was drafted is more consistent with what we need to run the organization.
Can I make a comment to that too?
Yeah.
Um, particularly for, uh, Jeremiah and Michael, who weren't on the board last year. We, we ran into this a lot where we had a lot of interviews to go through and so I, I can personally say I am in favor of this because it, it really was a lot. And I think it would ultimately was important was what the administration and the teachers had to say. As a board member, I feel like we're heard, but it just, we don't want to put a strain on what's happening if two of us aren't available. Especially if it goes into the summer, we're all on vacation. We don't want to stop um, the superintendent from being able to hire someone. So, um, I'm definitely in favor of this.
Thank you.
I'm in favor as well. It gives, you know, it gives the principals and the SAU the opportunity to have to hire and retain good candidates because we don't want to loo- have the chance of losing someone.
So I just have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
And I'm generally in favor of it, but, uh, the, the policy that's listed, that's linked, right? Said the process is in there somewhere? Am I missing that?
No, I think we're saying, oh, you're saying process or procedure?
No, it said the process about asking questions and stuff.
That's not in the policy. That's what we choose to do as a team. So we, I explained, we discussed it that there's a difference between procedure and the policy.
But what you said is the, the questions that are asked at the, the, the school level are fixed.
Right.
Okay, but you're going to have a school board member at those as well?
Yeah, as it says in, in, uh, um, if you look at, in the, in the draft, uh, under number one, building levels will include, building levels interviews will include two school board members whenever possible, but a minimum of one.
So what stops me from asking my own questions?
There's a process that, right, you're asking, should that be in writing in the policy?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's all I'm saying, like.
Yep.
What stops anybody from asking a question if it's not written up? Like, i- i- I think you should spell that out, that the, the questions at that level are fixed.
Okay.
If not, I'm free to ask whatever I want.
So would you recommend, uh, let me think about the language for that?
Do we want to get that granular though?
Well, we had an instance, uh, one of the interviews where somebody on this board, not longer on the board, went and asked a secondary question, which potentially could have got us in trouble. Correct? Am I recalling that correctly?
Yes. Yep.
So maybe wordsmith somehow, yeah.
That's just my suggestion. But again, I'm, I'm for the policy.
I-
No, it's great.
I would kind of, not on this particular question that you're asking, but somewhere else in the meeting, we were discussing some language. I kind of forget what it was, but to a certain extent, I think we can back ourselves into a corner by trying to make something so explicitly spelt out, so I understand what you're saying, but that was just something that came up earlier that I was making a point. If we make it too micromanaged, we could be backing ourselves into a corner and it could backfire on us. Not necessarily saying one way or the other, but that's just another way to look at it.
You, you used the word that, you used the word process, right?
Mm-hmm.
The process is defined by the, by the administrator superintendent, even if you say something like that, that interview at that level.
But I think sometimes there's difference between policy and procedure. So sometimes we have policies, but then we have procedures and how we'll implement that policy.
So where, where, where do you document the procedures?
This is a procedural question.
Right. Well, I think that's Rick's point, and I think, I think it's, I think you're bo- I think you're both saying the same thing. But Tom, we could do something like, at the procedure as defined by the superintendent and approved by the board.
I, I think, I think I'm okay with what I just put in there, just because I know how this needs to work to be, be effective.
In the policy.
Here.
In that's in the drive.
Hold on just a second. Hold on.
Like, if you click on it from the agenda, you can get to it or you can go in the drive.
That's not the, that's not the live version.
Document.
Okay, no problem. It's okay, I just shared it with everyone in your email. Just, uh, go into your email, it'll be right there.
Oh.
I'm watching you type. I got it.
You got it. Yeah, I saw your name in there.
Where's the, uh?
You just email it.
Building level interviews will include?
Yep, if you look, so if you look in the, in the policy, I put interviews at this level will include predetermined questions that are asked of all candidates. And then the next one down says interviews at this level will include predetermined questions that are asked of all candidates and questions that are specific to the resume of each candidate. Okay, I'll, I'll mirror that language in the administrator one too, the central office.
I read Jamie's comments, it's sort of a similar concern.
Can I ask, could I do one thing? Yeah. Just so we're not, to Morris's point, beholden to anything. Mm-hmm. The second thing, interviews at this level, it will include predetermined questions that are asked of all candidates and may include questions that are specific, right? Mm-hmm. Just to be, leave us, uh, you know, flexibility.
Right.
I love it. That's great. Yep. So how's that?
Yeah. Can you, um, expand it further and say, instead of just being limited to their resume, but also questions related to their, the position that they're applying for?
Mm-hmm.
Should it not say? Did not say application instead of resume? Because I'm just thinking, the resume is one page, but there's like an eight-page application that they fi- fill out and there's a lot of answers to questions, so.
Okay.
There's, there is good information there.
We see that?
If you're on the committee, so I'm on the committee and I'm looking- If you're on the committee, so I'm on the committee and I'm looking at some of the resumes.
Resume packet, is it resume packet?
Yeah, I like that resume, cause there's a whole pack.
I, I wrote, I, I'm down below, I was just wordsmithing in one spot, I apologize. Um, go, go down to number two under the, I was working on it there. Now it reads interviews at this level. Will include predetermined questions that are asked of all candidates and may include questions that are specific to the, to their. Resume, application packet. Or the position for which they have applied.
And again, is there, is there a reason that that's so tightly, is there a rule?
No, it's just practice.
Yeah, I mean, when we say resume, do we mean their business document or do we mean their background?
Uh, let's see.
Professional background, you know what I mean?
I think that's why we also have application packet, cause anything that.
Anything that's put in there.
Anything that's put in there.
But it also, the way this reads, it means we're only gonna ask questions about, that we've all agreed upon, which could include anything.
How's that? Check that out.
There you go, now we're talking.
Now we're talking. I knew where you were going.
Or anything else.
Didn't have time to.
Yeah.
I don't.
So now I'll paste that up to the top. Oh, refresh.
It is on his, but it's not on mine either.
I went to the email.
Oh, I went to the email too, I'm in the.
I'm in email and it's updating.
It's okay, Jeremiah, hang around long enough, you'll be one of the cool kids.
I, I don't even.
Yeah, I just fixed it in the top too, Rick. I pasted it up in the top as well, so it's the same.
There's an awful lot of Ms. in this, uh.
Yeah, okay.
How's that?
It's good. And I think just for the public to be clear, I, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the legal advice that we perceive is that we should. Asked the same questions to each candidate, right?
Mm-hmm.
At, at the certain level to make sure there's consistency in the interview process.
That is correct. To ensure fair screening of each candidate.
I just want the public to understand why we're.
Yeah, I think it's great that the public understands. Also, I want the public to understand the lengthy process that we go through to hire these people. It is, it's, there's a lot. I mean, it, it. It, uh, it's an area that as things settle, I would like to spend, two things that I would like to spend more time on. With my team are teacher evaluations and the hiring process. Right? We wanna hire, attract and retain the best people we can.
Right. And when you spend more time onboarding the right people, you spend less time with HR. Getting rid of people, right?
Yes.
So that's where we wanna spend the, most of our time in interview.
Yes, yep.
I hate to, I hate to be. Mister specific on this, but if, if we are thinking, uh, cause I wasn't aware of that piece, that. We've been advised to ask the same set of questions always. We should change the, we should change this to interviews at this level will include predetermined questions that are asked of all candidates, which may include. Because it's, we're, if we're sort of agreeing that it's gonna be the same set of questions.
Right.
For everybody, it's not, and may also include some other stuff. It's this predetermined set, which may include a broader range of things, but it's gonna be the same for everybody.
It's not though, so at that second level, it's more loose.
Right.
Oh, it is. First level that's fixed, sorry, we, we, we had a miss there.
Keep it in.
The first level has to be locked down.
Very, yeah.
And then the second interview is where you get a little.
And.
More, yeah.
That makes sense.
Yeah, and sometimes I'll even meet with people just myself and talk, right? I've done that a lot. Um, but, but the, the, the key for the public to understand is that oftentimes in the first interview. This is the minimum number of people that, or the people that would be involved and I think it's really important to recognize that, that at that, that level of, of, uh, um. The first round, sometimes you have folks that aren't really trained in HR. Or don't have a background in interviewing, so you wanna set up the questions in the process so that it's safe for the participants. In addition to the candidates, so that there are no mistakes made. So we typically do a little ten or fifteen minute training at the beginning. About the questions, but when it gets to the superintendent's office, it's a higher level of employee that has a background. In hiring and experience in that and they can often.
Okay.
Ha, you know, they know the things that are appropriate to ask or not to ask.
So was the motion to approve as amended?
I think you just made it.
I'll make a motion to approve as amended.
Second.
Alright.
Any further discussion? If there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you for the trust in handling this process to my staff and to me. It means a lot. It, it is definitely moving in the direction of supporting me and, and hiring the best possible people that I can and. The trust in expediting it, if I need to, really helps too. We, we have assistant principal interviews this Friday for the high school. And we also have, uh, upcoming principal interviews and in this environment, I might need to move very quickly, so I appreciate it.
So next, we'll need to strike policies, CD, GCEB and GCEBR as they are no longer. Relevant based on the new policy we just approved.
Right.
So I make a motion to strike those three policies.
Thank you.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Unanimous?
Um, so next we are bringing back policy KI, visitor to school staff and students. This is for second read.
We did make a small modification to this one, didn't we?
Yes, we, we had a conversation about school students and dismissing under the age of eighteen and we decided that we want any student that's being dismissed. To be dismissed by their parent, so, um, we're not moving forward with the language under of eighteen, under age eighteen. Uh, which is down below in the, uh, school student section at the bottom of the policy. We just feel that if you're a high school student at the school, the, the, the policy committee felt that your parent needs to know that you're being dismissed if you're a high school student.
And to clarify, the under eighteen, over eighteen was not originally in what was recommended to us.
Yes, it was a question, an addition. It wasn't originally recommended by the NHSBA. So we decided to move forward with the recommended policy as recommended by the NHSBA.
Keeping the status quo of what it is right now.
Yep.
So there was a, there was a question, I, I don't know if you've already seen it, that Jamie had a question on that, about the staff lobbing into lobby guard.
Yes.
It's not the same as when we log in, we talked about that too.
Yep.
Sorry, Heather, I'm stealing the thunder.
Oh, that's okay. So I did ask that question, cause every time I have to log into lobby guard, it takes a while. They have a key card that Matthew, man has and it has a barcode on it and they just scan it.
Yeah. Everyone does.
Yeah, so it's not, um, and it does not take very long.
They, they scan it, they don't have to type anything, just scan it on the way.
And it's way to track, so if there's an emergency.
Tom said we were getting some for the next meeting.
Ah, no, I did not.
Just kidding.
Talk to that guy.
Just kidding.
Maury, you're getting me into trouble.
I figured you maybe were talking about work.
No, no, no.
Job, job.
Got it from Mike and I when we first joined.
I, I love, I just.
Hey, all the power, you wanna, you wanna keep her, all the power to you.
I love how rigid they are about it. They, they, there's staff at Memorial that see me every single day, they know exactly who I am. I'll go, hey, I need to drop, sign in.
Yep.
Your license. I'm like, that's great, I love it.
Yep.
Any other questions? Motion to approve?
Are we doing this, I'm sorry, are we doing this for a first and second read? Or this is?
This is the second read.
Second rate, okay.
So you made the motion.
I make a motion to approve.
Mike it very gently.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion?
I'd like to say thank you for the contemplation on this and the specifics of it.
Thank you.
Yeah.
We had, we had a very long policy meeting.
Sorry.
Dawn, Dawn was on fire tonight, so it's good. It is important, it was great, uh, yeah, yeah, and it was a great discussion, yep.
Alright, all in favor?
And that is it for policies.
Alright.
We will have more for you after our next meeting on the twenty first.
That I promise I'll try not to think of so many questions during the meeting.
Just shoot me an email like three days in advance, I'll call everyone and get all the answers.
You know what it is, is when we.
It is.
I'm the same way. It's when I'm getting into a meeting and I'm working, working and reading other.
Yes.
Yep.
It triggers you to think of other things that you didn't think of before in the first or second time you read it.
Just work too well together. We do, so efficient.
Um, okay, second public comment. We will move on. Um, alright, next Sanborn Regional School Board meeting will be held on Wednesday, June seventh, twenty twenty-three at six PM. The Sanborn Regional High School Library. Who wants to roll us into non-public?
I make a motion to move us into non-public under RSA ninety-one dash A semicolon three, Roman numeral two CK.
Awesome.
Second.
Alright, roll call in, Heather.
Yes.
Yes.
Jeremiah.
Yes.
Laura.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Alright, quick five minute break.
What's, what's your name over there?